Right to the last curriculum committee meeting of two thousand twenty. No, I should say the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. All right. So as always, we're going to start with an open public meeting and. I have this sheet, but I don't think that's for curriculum. Well. And I see one of our closest friends in attendance. So I'm assuming you're signed up.
First, first up, we have Jolene Fish. I'm sorry, Jolene Fetter.
Uh, Jolene is a mic right there in the center, if you don't mind.
Hello.
Hello. You might have to like.
Adjust.
Speak into it. Yes.
Do I just start your questions? Just go ahead and start.
You, you, you give us, give us your best.
All right. Uh, so my name is Jolene. I've been working with Diana Cole for about a year now. Um, I know she's been trying to get healthy relationship skills course going and I'm here to advocate for that just because of everything that I've been through since I was sixteen. Um. I was sixteen in eleventh grade when I met my ex. I spent twenty years with him and it ended with kidnapping abuse and held that gunpoint. And I feel like if I had the skills and the uh tools to learn how to love myself and stand up for myself, I probably wouldn't have been in the situation I was in for twenty years. It was um a lot of emotional abuse, uh verbal abuse and because I was never shown how to love myself or stand up for myself. It was always taking care of the other person without taking care of myself. I didn't know how to love myself more than caring about somebody else's feelings. So I feel like if I had the tools to realize my worth and my value and not tolerate the things that I had been through, I wouldn't be where I am now. So I'm thirty-seven now. And that was the only relationship I've known or have ever had. Um, I've had, you know, a couple of dates and relationships and I'm still working through the trauma that I've been through, um doubting my self-worth, doubting uh what I know I deserve. Um unable to be confident in expressing what I deserve and not putting up with what I don't. So if I had somebody at a younger age to help me with my confidence and self-love that I would be in healthier relationships and be in a healthier place than I am right now. At thirty-seven years old, I've been with one person. So it's just. I support this very much because I've struggled and I don't want anybody else to go through what I've been through. So I'm sorry. That's so emotional.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. That's a powerful testament.
Yeah.
And uh, do you have anything to add? Yes. Say it.
Yeah.
Okay. We will ask our committee to respond to you after Diane has changed the speech. But thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it tremendously.
Um, as you, most of you know who I am, Diana Cole, advocating for a healthy relationship skills course for thirty years. Because of all the trauma kids are going through because they're not parented well. And we just don't have the time, you know, there's no classroom to learn those skills. It takes a lot of time, just like math and English. So Jolene volunteered to come here tell her story and say how important this is to have prevention. So I'm hoping again, as you know, I will show up every month. Yeah, like a lovely sunshine and uh hopefully that you all really promote this in a huge way, make it a priority. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Any committee colleagues have a response to anything we heard?
Well, I just want to say thank you for coming in and talking. It was really hard to talk about that at all. Um, let alone talk about it in front of a group of strangers in a public way. Um, so I know that really reflects the passion that you feel about it. And I really appreciate that you came in and did that. And um, I don't know a lot about the topic yet, but I look forward to having more conversations to learn more about about the class and and talking more about it. Thank you.
Um, I too want to thank you. That's very brave and important and appreciated. Um. Honestly, I'm quite new to the curriculum curriculum committee and because of my parenting situation, I haven't made as many meetings as I hoped. So I'm actually unclear on what courses we offer that might cover this in some capacity. Um, because I do know how important it is. Um. Especially, and actually in the work that I do, we we talk about healthy relationships for people with disabilities to help understand them and what that means on many levels. Uh, and so it's important and some of those skills apply to all. So I'll be curious as well to learn more about what we're doing and and maybe what we could expand on. Um, and again, thank you.
I have comments. I have been speaking to this matter for several years now and I have made all the comments that I have.
Thank you, Pat. Pat has a lot of comments. If you go back through the minutes, that would be a quick way to get up to speed on our conversations. Probably better than starting from scratch, actually, because they go back several years. Uh, Jolie, want to add my um gratitude for you being brave enough to come and share what clearly is a traumatic story. I'll say quickly that anyone who attended any of our graduation ceremonies in the last couple of weeks. It is so obvious that our language, uh, we communicate with children, how we expect them to communicate with each other has changed dramatically. I can't use myself as an example because I was in elementary school in the dark ages. But there were so many comments about love and connection and forgiveness and gratitude and being strong and thinking that you matter, right? And and believing you are you belong. Belonging was a central theme. That is because there is a bit of social emotional learning and healing embedded in every classroom. Not just a singleton class in high school that would be an electric. Because the kind of things you alluded to, many of us experience that, you know, not going to put anybody in the spot. I was in my forties before I recognized that trauma was something I had to pay attention to. Right? It took a very long time to wrestle with some of the things I experienced. And I'm sure all the adults in this room can speak to that. But the generations graduating now, they can protect themselves emotionally for the most part. Of course, there's always going to be levels to this. We know the state is working on some legislation that we hope comes with money that will allow us not to have just a single class, but multiple classes that focus just on this topic as as early as elementary school. Because it is important to teach young people how to defend themselves. So your voice is heard. I don't know if you have any young people in your life who have recently gone through this school experience, but if you ask them some of the questions that you can form, that you can uniquely form, you will hear language that we didn't have access to. So we take that very seriously. We're very proud of that, but that is not to say we're close to the end either. There, there. As the young people say, there are layers to this. But thanks again for your time. Really appreciate it. I'm assuming no one else has signed up. All right, moving on to approval of minutes have uh have folks had a chance to look at the last set of minutes, May twenty-third?
I admit if I was not here.
Oh.
So I will abstain from approving the minutes.
I I'm good with them.
And as am I. All right, now we're going to get into the the bulk of this meeting, which is going to be a look back at where we've gone this year. And uh, our field leaders, Lily and Mary, going to take us through that. It's been a lot. It's been so much that I asked for this because I obviously couldn't remember everything that we've seen, every place we've been and the things we took away this evening.
Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Everybody who's watching at home or later, I'm Lily Talcott and I get to serve as the deputy superintendent of schools here. And with me is one amazingly brilliant, lovely colleague.
Mary Crowe.
Thank you, Lily, for that introduction.
I thought it was just me. I didn't know what was going on.
Um, you may not know this about me, but I am a, well, Tricia's trying to get up our PowerPoint. I'm a huge Saturday Night Live fan. I think Erin does know that about me. Um, and so every time I get in front of a microphone, I can't help myself but do the Will Ferrell hot mic. We got a hot mic.
Yeah, you know, Lily, what you all just did right there is very reminiscent reminiscent of the sweaty balls gift.
A delicious dish.
Now we're having fun.
Yeah, it goes, it goes way back. Back in the day, Tricia, just let us know when you're ready. Back in, back in the nineties, when there were VHSs, I would press record at eleven-thirty and go to sleep. Man, those were the days. Wake up in the morning, get to watch Saturday Night Live on a VHS tape. Pretty cool. Very fun. Yep.
I can say I recorded several on Betamax.
Oh.
How about that?
I think you win. That's cool. That's way, that's way cool. That's really funny. Yeah.
Yeah, so was Ch- uh, Cherry Chase and I believe early Eddie Murphy. I have
Yeah.
somewhere in storage.
Yeah.
Beta.
Is, are there Betamax players? I'm sure you can find on the internet somewhere. Yeah.
I I doubt it, but uh, let's say yes.
There's gotta be a way to play this.
So as this is going on, I'd like to offer an update about today because um it has been amazing this week, the amount of educators attending professional development. And it is a really, really energizing space in the high school and we have so many people wanting to attend that we ran out of rooms that were air conditioned. So there was a lot of uh creative scheduling for spaces. So as as Tricia is is pulling that up, pulling up the our slide deck for this evening, um, I do want to thank educators who have chosen to come this week and are, you know, I feel like I'm running on fumes a little bit. They are not. It is really energizing to sit with them in the spaces here, the essential questions they're coming up with. So we have around uh twenty-five people attending anti-marginalization curriculum writing. Around seventy educators, uh, teachers and ESPs participating in therapeutic crisis interventions in schools.
And nurses, front office staff, lots of folks from all levels and places in the organization, which is really cool.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
I share that um narrative from the kids who sat on the panel.
Thank you.
New Roots, high school, LCS, New Roots kids. That was close to the top of their agenda. The more adults that can be trained in therapeutic crisis intervention, the better their lives would be as kids. Um, so I'm glad to hear that. Any other strands that we should be aware about the curriculum writing and TCIS this week?
Those are this week. We have to reschedule our restorative justice training. Unfortunately, our facilitator got stuck in the Houston airport. So we are rescheduling that and we can put that out to you all. So you're aware of that as well. We are taking a hiatus for July. We are very, very intentionally uh decided to take a break and not offer anything during July so that folks who are able to take that space can take that space. Obviously, we have wonderful programming still around project innovation and summer school. Um, but in terms of professional learning, we wanted to give folks some uh downtime.
Last summer was pretty packed. So, yeah, I get it. Uh, how many people had signed up for the the last one we talked about and the name just went.
Restorative justice.
Restorative justice, right.
So we had, we had about twenty educators and then we have fifteen students who would be paid through a grant that Mary secured through the Park Foundation. Uh, so we're contracting with Ithaca Youth Bureau in order to pay students who are fourteen or older or utilizing a gift card system to um compensate those children who are uh in middle school but are not fourteen yet. So they've been participating in training all year with Dr. Nguyen. Um, and they run the uh Transformational Justice and Education Center out of UC Davis and Maisha T. Nguyen is the author of Justice on Both Sides. And so this was the culmination and to really learn those circle practices and engage in the work in a physical space all together with the kids and the adults who have been being trained simultaneously. So we'll just find another time for that.
Great, great, great. Can't wait to hear when it's rescheduled.
Yeah, that's very cool. All right. So we're going to jump right in. We're going to take a look back at this past year. Mary and I are going to go back and forth and just uh sort of realign everyone with what we have done and pose some questions to help us think about where we want to focus next year. So we can come in with some drafts and hit the ground running, hopefully in August. All right? So pause us at any point and um, yeah, stop us, jump in, share your reflections as well, um, if if you'd like. So back in August of last year, we took a lot of time to look at our evolution over time. So what are some of the ways in which we framed our thinking around curriculum? So we looked at the last five years and the models that we had designed. We coupled that with learning forward, um, looking at assessment models and a middle school focus. And we ultimately came up with, I'm going to go to here, um, that we would focus on middle school evaluation and strategic partnerships while we're also examining learning forward ICSD. So everything that we did was in relationship to those big three in terms of learning forward ICSD, right? So it was almost like taking different magnifying glasses or lenses, right, and shifting them out as we took a look at anti-racist curriculum for all through a middle school lens, right? Um, we planned and implemented some classroom visits. So Pat, I think, spoke to maybe a couple of we maybe a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, you talked about our visits to the middle school mathematics classrooms and some of the work that our young people and our educators were engaged in together. We use a note catcher. It's non-evaluative. We ask teachers, we send it to them when we ask them if we can even come and visit. Um, and it's, it's essentially aligned with our, our goals around learning forward ICSD and just kind of gives board members and any other administrators who are visiting just sort of uh some context in order to connect with and talk with folks. So we then met with about ten middle school educators who are co-teaching mathematics to learn how this transition has been going with this huge blip of COVID also taking place. What supports um they have, they have put in place, what still needs to be shifted or tweaked in order to enhance the program as well. And um, honestly, it was it, it was also just beyond inspiring. These are folks that I've known for a number of years. Um, and you know, we were teachers together in the ITA and um, the the ways in which they have cultivated community within a totally inclusive mathematics classroom and the ways in which they are creating opportunities for such deep mathematical thinking and modeling. It's kind of astounding. It was really, really fabulous. So very exciting to see. Um, and we also know there's plenty of room uh to grow as well and and things that folks, you know, want continued support around. So we are engaging in more professional development with uh the folks over at Stanford. So Joe Bowler um has been leading a number of workshops that are really focused on heterogeneous mathematics teaching. Um, so everything from um high interest math tasks to low floor, high ceiling tasks, to three act math tasks. Uh, folks are continuing to get some support and um professional learning and how to do that even better. Um, because it is, it continues to be a shift. I'll pause there if there are board members who want to talk at all about that visit or some of that focus.
I have.
Thanks.
I will say uh we were unsure rather than the pandemic had completely derailed heterogeneous math. And I was happily surprised when it seemed like, no, not only were they back in the groove, but they had taken whatever lessons they had gained from this virtual world and bought it into the real world. Again, Erin, uh, you may know this, you may recall this, Alan, this is all new to you. We basically bought the kiddos three more years to decide if they're Albert Einstein by introducing algebra skills at an earlier age in subtle ways that they don't even know that they're learning with the hope that when they reach eighth grade, many more children will be naturally inclined to say yes to high level mathematics. I'm not going to go into history. We've talked about that enough. Um, but yeah, this is a this is what all forward-thinking school districts are trying to do. This is what our National Academies of Sciences and Mathematics have said is the future. So I'm excited about that. Um. Uh, just an example of what a dominant narrative is, right? Because that's a scary word out there now. People confuse culturally responsive teaching with critical race theory, which continues to blow my goddamn mind, but that's just me. All right, so there was a book that was circulating for third grade readers, but I cannot remember the name of it. But it was a book that was discussing indigenous populations and their interactions with settler colonialists. You all may remember the name of it. Once I, once I say the right keywords. But the kids reported to us that the book itself had almost no information about indigenous people. It was almost as if this country was founded as a blank slate. And they asked, their teacher made it to us eventually for more information. Who were these people? How did they vanish? Why aren't they represented at Thanksgiving in marketing ads, right? Why don't they, why don't people see him on television? So it was really fascinating to watch the teachers sort of have conversations with middle schoolers about the complexity of those interactions. Right? We had at least six white nations, at least twelve hundred indigenous tribes, right? Some interactions went spectacularly well, some ended in disaster. No side was blameless, but we know what the ultimate result was. So that's an example of just ripping apart a dominant narrative. And I'd like to think that we sparked that as a board by changing the designation of the day from Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day, which GAB teaches a rallying cry. So I could expound on that, but that's just one example that would help make it clear for our colleagues what we mean by, by dominant narratives that just need, they should have shifted a century ago, but we're getting around to it now.
Thank you. So we also did some debriefing. I just wanted to include a a couple of other pieces of information because as Eldred mentioned, we're we're working to ensure that more kids have more entry points to higher level mathematics, right? They have more time in order to learn all of the standards for mathematical practice, all the concept standards, right? And um, you know, we've put in some additional supports in order to get more kids into algebra and help more kids stay. Uh, so we are now co-teaching algebra as opposed to simply having one teacher, uh, which allows us to universally design algebra for all children, right? Regardless of their IEP status, right? And it also allows for more support for students who may be ready for algebra but may struggle with a couple of additional concepts, et cetera. And so it gives that additional support. We also have a course and support in order to prepare students in seventh grade. So we're not waiting until eighth grade and hoping that all kids are ready. Had targeted communication with kids and families. Uh, we have some summer work that's occurring. We have Ithaca Math Circles, which is this fabulous organization that is was started by a group of young women of color from Cornell. And they, we have begun a small contract with their organization. And they come into our schools on Tuesdays and Thursdays, our middle schools, and work with students. Um, and our, our hope, and they do, and they do really joyful, joyful mathematics. A lot of them are on logic problems and um really visualizing and modeling around algebra, which is really, I think, really fun. They make it super fun. Um, and kids get to see themselves in in these young folks, mostly female identifying, mostly identify as females of color from Cornell um in in this after-school experience. Um, and then we also have high schoolers, again, this grant that Mary secured, we can pay high school kids to tutor middle schoolers, which is awesome. So two days, uh, two to three days a week, we have a group of high schoolers who go over to Boynton or go over to Dewitt and they do small group and one-on-one tutoring with kids in order to help them get ready for algebra.
And that takes place during, during the school day?
It actually happens at the end of the school day, but we have, thanks to the board and our fabulous transportation department, fussing.
All right.
For kids. All right.
What schools does that take place in?
Uh, Boynton and Dewitt.
Okay, both. All right, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Um, moving on, in the school year, uh, Katie and Margot and Casey, who are all part of our communications team, they talked about our website and the ways in which we're working to tell the story of learning forward ICSD through social media and through other forms of uh communication. Um, I you know, I'd I would say two, um, you know, they talked a little bit about some of the metrics that they're using to help them understand how much our community is engaging and some of the learning forward communications as well, um, obviously with an aim to really grow that.
Alright, so let's talk a little bit about literacy. This is a snapshot of the monthly flyer that goes out for literacy professional development opportunities. Um, that is updated based on the feedback that we're getting from educators and. It has been. It's been a journey in finding times that. Folks are, are able to access it right now this year. There's been some transit, some transitions. So, you know, prior to COVID, after offering after-school paid time for teachers to gather was. Fairly well received and in this climate, in this year, the, some of the job embedded experiences. Like having, for example, Robin Rudy from Really Great Reading come to our district three different days. And push into classrooms to observe a teacher and then create a structure that they can debrief with Robin. Uh, what she saw and some tips that she has. Or using their prep time to do a fifteen-minute online virtual consult. With Robin and there's a menu that people can choose far from as far as how to use the assessment. How to use a specific lesson in the Really Great Reading curriculum, for example. And those were utilized more when I look at the, the heat map, the literacy consult for teams. Is an example, you know, I wanted to include it on here because it's an example of one that wasn't well attended, right? So we're learning to, educators are voting with their feet. Um, whereas the instructional coaching days were well received. And look at that, it's definitely raining.
That's what that sounds like.
Is that what that is?
Right.
I believe so, I believe so.
Alright, can I, can I just stop there because?
Sure.
Again. Talk about that soundbite, right? Those two things are massive. They cover everything we're doing from a curriculum standpoint in the district, learning forward and. Literacy, so I'm going to stop and ask my colleagues, if they have any questions and comments on any aspects of those two parts of our journey.
I want to add one, um, the implementation training modules. So I, I think as a result of, of COVID, Really Great Reading, for example, is a company that put some of their online training. Onto online modules that teachers access, do it as they're able. They pause after the first four modules work with the student and then it unlocks the. Latter half of the modules and they submit their certificate of completion and timesheet. Um, to Sharon Warren, who manages making sure people are paid. And that has been a, a successful model as well, that asynchronous piece with a, a check-in with the student and providing evidence of. How you applied what you learned through the modules.
I'll just, I'll just add that I have been immensely impressed by the literacy curriculum that we looked at at the elementary level. Um, as much as I was by the math curriculum that we've looked at at the middle school level. Given that I'm such an old timer in the district that I had an elementary student thirty years ago in this district. I'm seeing tremendous strides everywhere. And. I am sorry, I won't be around to visit the high school next year, but I'll find some way to visit.
We will make sure we invite you. Alright, so. I'll just add, uh, learning forward is, um. If you haven't familiarized yourself with it, there's a whole component about what that means online on the website. We are preparing now. For the day when assessments take a significant shift in this state. And as you just read, if you read Sean's email about the regions. Coming to grips with the fact that regions probably need to be done away with in total. At least the requirement for five regions to prove something that doesn't prove anything, that you're ready for the next step. And we've been putting pieces in place for what that replacement will be, project-based learning. A deeper understanding of curriculum, a deeper understanding of all people's positions in this country and around this globe in relation to curriculum. It's a lot to say. Evidence-based literacy programs, we resisted buying things from a box forever, right? That, that's the phrase we used to use, right? We're not buying anything, we're goddamn box to teach kids to read. Finally, I think we've landed on something that is just proven. The other way around, and it is proving itself successful in our kiddos. And to see it in action is pretty extraordinary. Our teachers are doing it with fidelity. Kids seem to be engaged and again, just can't wait to, um. Determine what assessments we're going to use to make this community satisfied that its hundred and fifty million dollar investment. Is moving in the right direction beyond. Static assessments, quantitative and qualitative. We're still trying to perfect that balance.
So I want to, I want to take a minute to really. Thank you, Pat, for all of your support on the curriculum committee as we. Embark on responding to student need in a way that is. Culturally responsive and not out of. Out of a complete just reaction, but really considers student need and your, your questions. All year long, for a number of years to get us to where we are. So I do want to, I do, um, Eldred, you gave the example of just how we talk about days on our school calendar and the impact that has for what we design. And I would like to say in regards to literacy, one example that's really, I think. Thanks to the support of this committee and your work as board members. We, you've really encouraged creative thinking. This summer, we have a hybrid model of professional development and small group instruction for children around literacy. Where teachers can, with a small group of students who've elected to, to meet. Twice a week for small group instruction and reading. Uh, they are paired with a teacher who has used the strategies throughout the year. And a teacher who is new to our district and hoping to use it the following year so they can see it used in action. So it's professional development, but it's also in service of children. Um, so I'm very thankful to our board and this committee for supporting that kind of creative. Pilots that last year we piloted it and this year it's increased, will be doubling the number of students participating. It's close to sixty children who are not attending Project Innovation. Project Innovation. We have close to four hundred at this time. So thank you.
So we spent some time. Thinking about how we facilitate learning around anti-marginalization topics as well. Mary and I both. Engaged in some exploration around the. Resources that we use in order to support educators as they're going through the anti-marginalization curriculum writing institute. As folks are. Beginning their journey of discussion. Um, in, uh, in elementary classes or in secondary classes. Um, that goes beyond what Eldred was talking about around, goes beyond dominant narratives, right, or centering dominant narratives. Um, ultimately, we talked about. Creating something that was a much smaller and shorter map, um, which we've been working on internally, right? Um, and working with principals on, in order to support folks. As, as best we can or better, right? We know that some educators are really excited to do the work of anti-racist education in their classrooms. And they need some help and support in terms of like, how do I do this? How do I bridge this topic? How do I set up my classroom? So it's going to be, uh, an environment where these discussions can take place, where this learning can take place, where folks can be vulnerable. And also be safe, maybe not comfortable, but definitely safe, right? Um, and how do we handle it when things go, don't go exactly as planned? And how do we, how can I keep going and keep learning in? In that space when it gets messy, right? And so, you know, that was, that was a really helpful conversation, I think. For, for us, because one of the things that we were hearing from board members during that conversation was this work is great. And if you don't access the four-day institute, you still need, you still need more of an entry point as an educator. And, and so maybe common supports in order to help our predominantly white, female forty-something. Year-old educator force, right? Um, so that was a really helpful, I think, impetus for us to create some more universal supports for four, for folks as well.
This one was, this one was critical, I mean. We started this conversation because people have come to myself and other board members. Uh, from both sides of the, of the equation. Majority teachers, minority teachers both saying, hey. We tried this and you smacked us on the hand, right? And then I'm paraphrasing because the language wasn't that sweet. But we got in trouble for doing this. And, uh, we asked to see what the parameters were, what are the rubbers, how are we? Helping our teachers understand. That there may be lines, there may actually be boundaries, but within those boundaries, you can go crazy with color. But there are boundaries. Because kids are, and we don't know what those boundaries are with children, right? And I may know that I could dance circles around most of people in this room, probably everyone regarding. A certain aspect of my ethnicity and my history, that I would be just as much a fish out of water. If you ask me to read some real conversations about sexual orientation or identity orientation. I would have to, I would have to really do some soul searching and then get some professional development. And then pray that there's some grace in the room when I inevitably screw up. So this was, this was, uh, this was powerful. It's good to know that this exists and that, um. Maybe next year we can get more clarity on the following, especially for new members who join curriculum. There are multiple ways we decide to do performance, performance, professional development. Based on our resources, based on the consultant, based on what season. A lot of times we choose exempt far as we have them come through the learning and then we expect them to go seed the field, right? Other times we provide ongoing professional development, so as many people possible can come and, uh, drink from that hydrant, so to speak, right? New York City kid, right, my identity. But I'm not sure, I'm not even sure which. Subject matter, you know, do we, do we use which, uh, do we adopt which strategy? For example, we're talking about restoring the justice. Is that going to be a seeding approach? Are we going to open that up for as many staff members as possible on a rolling basis to sign up for that? You don't even have to answer that now, but those are the kind of questions I think would be helpful for this committee going forward to wrap our minds around.
Got it. Thanks.
Alright, so I was, we have to talk about this. And I want, just want to add for the anti-marginalization, a concrete example from today. Where a US history teacher is writing a unit. So the standard might be how to, how did industrially, how did industrialization impact? A community. So that would be a guiding question, but what they're working on is an essential question. That keeps us intrigued and curious throughout the whole unit of study. So what is progress? And so that's a question you can't really answer without further exploration and bringing in multiple perspectives. And so that's one example that, you know, I would hope for us to have some time to explore that in the high school classrooms. Because what the high schools, the high school teachers from Ithaca High School are in full attendance this week. And so, um, I just wanted to, to give that example.
Shout out to the social studies department.
Before you move forward, alright, so there was a question on somebody's exam a couple of years ago that made it, made its way to us. And the question went something like. What industrial invention necessitated? A considerably larger investment in slaves in the South. And I saw that. And my head wanted to explode, but before my head exploded, someone handed me a piece of paper where a beautiful child of ours had written. The South never needed slaves. Right? And I thought, this is education. And this is an identity, one of those identity. Uh, uh, moments in time where any conscious adult could look at that and say to themselves if they're honest. Oh, I never thought of it that way. Right? And this was a ninth grade, I think, I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly, it was a ninth grade. Stop. Stop. To say need slaves.
Right.
Indicates that we all need some retraining. And we need some, we need a, a different historical perspective. Now imagine previously all the years where that happened and nobody had the courage to address that teacher, that question. And some kids are sitting in the back, white, black, right? Tall, short, middle class, lower class, upper class, thinking to themselves, all this in their head. This is disgusting to say that somebody needed slaves, but didn't have an outlet for it. These are the kind of things that arrest the development of learning, right? That we've never even thought about as a community in this country before until relatively recent with fidelity. So thank you. I want every kid to be able to look at a question like that and say, what is this BS? Humanity never needed slaves.
Thank you.
To the fun topic of council picture.
Sure, in, in four minutes.
Alright, so this is going to be where we shine really bright on our student board reps. Who, when we're thinking about learning forward in the context of the curriculum and the supports that we want to provide. Educators and students. Part of our supports around mental health, healthy relationships, integrated social emotional learning. And even the updating of Title IX policy, sexual harassment and Title IX policy is represented in this slide. So there's a lot to unpack here. If we really, um, span in the drop-in counseling, that was an idea brought to us by students. And I quote, I don't want to have to plan my mental health crisis. So where do I go? How do I access support in real time? And the educators, our mental health team at Ithaca High School rallied, came up with dates, times, spaces. This is the first draft and iteration of that. When we think about integrated social emotional learning and. Refreshing and onboarding educators who join our organization or want to take a deeper dive into ruler. There was a virtual conference, thirty-seven participants. Carrie Burke did an amazing job facilitating follow-up conversations and sending newsletters. That would highlight some of the strategies featured in the, at the conference to be used in classrooms. And so in the wake of some of, uh, the tragedies we have navigated as a community. Those, you will see evidence of the impact of. those you will see evidence of the impact of Ruler and journal, you know, the structures you set up in the classroom to implement it, from one-on-one conversations, small group conversations to journaling. And then Active Minds has been very active. And that's again, um, a student group who's bringing keynote speakers and facilitating events. Sensei Lines Packing was one event that was facilitated this year by that group with continued conversation.
Yeah.
And I'm missing, if you want to add.
No, that's great. I think we're, we're pretty close to out of time, so.
You're going to make them wait for us.
We're going to make them wait? Okay, let's, I can't remember how many more slides. I think this is it, actually. I think I ended on with the mic drop. I think this was our last, last curriculum committee meeting. And Mary and Lisa really went through the micro credential. So that's in more recent memory.
And it is, uh, very, very well attended. Jill, thank you, Jill Tripp, for, uh, attending the portfolio presentations. The identity portfolio presentations happened in, at the end of May, in the beginning of June. We had approximately 38 educators offer their presentation on how their racial, ethnic, and cultural identity impacts the learning experiences that they engineer and create for students. Uh, anti-marginalization curriculum writing this summer, just this summer alone, we will have roughly 60 educators participating. We've had about 40, um, middle school staff completing it this year and a pilot to offer it during the school day.
Yeah.
And then the last one, the relationships with family, that, that is the Kewa Heights staff came and presented as a height. They, they are the building to date that has been participating in that strand two years running, which is something to celebrate. We look forward to other buildings expanding that work and that strand.
So I think with our, our look back, one of our questions is around focusing on, and the ways in which we'd like to focus on literacy from a really broad lens, right? So still keeping learning forward, certainly in the forefront. Um, but thinking about the ways in which English language arts and mathematics, literacy connects with all of those four elements. And so our, our question is, you know, does that sound like an interesting and a worthwhile way forward for us? Um, as we're looking at, you know, we focused on middle school a bit. We could either take a lens that's pre-K through 12. Or we could focus in on the high school. We haven't spent a ton of time at Ithaca High School and Lehman Alternative Community School in the past. Um, so that, that could also, also be useful. We do have some new board members and I don't know what the, what the curriculum committee structure makeup is going to be necessarily, but we'd love to hear just some of your initial thinking as we begin to prepare the map for the year, like we do each year.
All right, they're going to, they're going to beat us up if we don't wrap this up soon. So I will say my expectation, even as a member, if I stay on and I'm not elected chair, is that we go to the high school. Because we spent a lot of years, elementary and middle school, and frankly, elementary is cooking. Right? The one thing I'm very curious about, and I know I'm not alone, is how do we restore the relationship between a teacher in high school and a student? Once that student feels that the teacher has been, has oppressed them, whether it's personally or institutionally, right? How do we get that child back in class, right, as soon as possible? Because the alternatives may feel good and they may actually be supportive, right, emotionally, psychologically. But we focusing a lot of our energy on what happens in classrooms here for, for the right reason. And I don't have a clear answer on that. And, and if, I don't think I've heard a clear answer. So again, we're not going to address that now, but that's something I'm very curious. Who fixes that relationship? Who restores that?
And then just as you're talking, I'm so, sorry.
I was going to say with that, unless my colleagues have something else pressing, we're going to draw this last curriculum committee meeting of the 22, 23 school year to an end before Sean hits me with his side, with his iPhone, which is expensive. Anything for the good of the order, folks, before we wrap up, Erin?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Pat, it's been fantastic.
For the, a great review of the great year.
Pat, thank you for your service on curriculum.
It's been a pleasure.
We had cupcakes for you last time and then you get someplace fancy around the world. Thank you.
It was, it was further upstate New York.